May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda, councilmember Frios.
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sabatia and Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Thank you. We will be going into closed session to hear conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Orozco versus the City of San Juan Batista at all. Conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Dosses at all versus the City of San Juan Batista. Conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. Do we have any public comment?
Nobody in chambers and seeing nobody on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We can go to closed session now. We will see you all on or about 6:00 PM. Thank you.
That it's okay, that basically states that local jurisdictions at the moment do not, we're not able to make any amendments to residential codes. In order to basically try to kind of try to make it easier, easier pathway for residential construction to kind of address the housing limits, limitations that we have currently in the state. So we're not able to bring local amendments that the California Building Standards Commission would approve.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to now open it up to the public. Do we have any comments in chambers?
No speaker cards received for the public hearing and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, back to council, councilmember Aranda.
No questions, comment, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frios.
Yeah, thank you. So there is, so it does affect our uniqueness. Sacramento's pretty much telling us all how to run our towns and our building codes, so unfortunately we're not going to have much control over some of that stuff in the near future, so that's, that's that's the long and the short of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you. So I'm thinking that first and foremost, the reason for this is safety. I see the firemen behind you.
So yes, well, obviously with, with every code cycle, there are amendments that are made to and this, this year's 2026, the energy code obviously is a big one. California is moving towards electrification. So there are more restrictions on gas, you know, gas in new construction. There's ESS ready in new construction as well for new residential. That's also in the new code. A lot of other items in there. I think the most important change that you would probably see is that the Wild Urban Interface Code that affects construction in any type of fire severe, any fire hazard zone has its own chapter now. They pulled it out of the building code and it's now in chapter seven.
That was, that was a map that I think the fire chief came before us and we talked about the different areas of high fire intensity danger. It was like there was areas and so now they're sort of interfacing this code with that.
So yes, and with, and instead of having it in the building code, they pulled it out and made it its own part. So it's now part seven.
Okay.
It's got its own part, so that way it was all incorporated with all.
And does this code also yours, I heard, and also councilmember Frios, in reference to his comment, you know, it's taking local jurisdictions control and this is placing a lot more at the state level. And I know there's been California Cities League of Cities has been really kind of bucking this, but in terms of what, what this is for, is it, you said housing, is it going to loosen up the housing requirements so that we can build more housing? Or is it being more restrictive?
So the codes themselves are not doing that. It was state legislature that, that was pushing for this assembly bill. The California Associated Building Officials were objecting because we don't, I say this might health and safety should not be, and I agree with councilman that it, it's health and safety. And these types of regulations where it would be difficult to put a hiatus on a, on a residential code when there's so many other parts of the code, like the plumbing, mechanical, on electrical code that also coinc, that interlink with residential construction. But I believe that was their purpose was to try to open up a pathway for more housing. You know, and so by less restrictions, especially with like the Palisades fires are just trying to clear pathway to, you know, to a faster pathway to permits. Yeah. So these codes, obviously they're, they're in place. The full bill did not get passed, but the ability to make amendments, local amendments, if we already didn't have amendments in place, the ability to make those amendments within the next 10 years is going to be difficult. We'd really have to you know, really have life and sa, life and safety issues and that we'd have to be addressing in order to make, have those amendments pass through the Building Standards Commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Oh, we're not done. Mayor Protem Sabatia.
I missed the initial report, but I don't have any questions based on prior reading.
Thank you. So we're following Hollister's engineering design standards. They're still applicable to San Juan. Have you reviewed all of those?
I believe so. Now, I, I have not reviewed them, but I believe that I consulted with Jerry Sanguenetti and I believe that we're still using those standards.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they still fit with, if they're updating their standards that, that we're aware of everything that they're doing.
I, I will confer with Jerry Sanguenetti to verify that that's.
Thank you. And then at some point, all of our building code enforcement planners, all of those folks will be trained on all of the new nuances of all of this?
Yes. Yes, I've started training our new permit technician yesterday, actually. And I'll be spending some time with the planners next week and kind of also, as you know, I'm not here
Right.
all day, you know, all week. So yeah, so I will be cross-training planners and the permit tech to ensure that we have some consistency and, and someone at the counter that can assist citizens with their questions. And obviously I'm available, you know, to further those conversations if need be.
Awesome. Thank you. And one last thing, do we have any projects that are current now that these affect?
Well, the code itself, the new codes, it'll, the applications accepted after December 31st are the, are the the projects that will need to comply with the new upcoming code. So all applications received now will be constructed, even if the permits haven't been issued because it's based off of application date.
Okay.
Will be built under the 2022 code. So at the currently, we have no projects that are going to be, that are affected by the new code.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I am closing public comment on 5A and we will, I'm sorry, did we have a a public comment on?
Mayor, you opened up the public hearing and you closed it and you brought it back for councilmember comments. So public comment has been closed.
Thank you. Open up public comment for item B, an ordinance amending chapter five dash one of the City of San Juan Batista Municipal Code to adopt the 2025 edition of the Fire Code and appendices of Title 24, Part 9 in its entirety with certain exceptions, modifications and additions and approving findings to support local modifications. Good golly. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me come tonight. My name is Charlie Bedola. I am your fire marshal. And thank you for reading that for me. So basically what it's doing is just re-adopting the code that we already have in, in place already. So every three years we have to do it. If we don't do it, then it falls back to the boilerplate. So we're not making any modifications. It's the same code that we have already in place and we're continuing to place. It's consistent with Monterey Counties, Hollisters and San Benito County. So they can't say, well, we do it different over here. We do it different over here. We're all under the same code. So I'm really excited about this because we have all the same code and even Santa Cruz, we're a little bit different, but it's the same code through there.
Nice. Thank you very much. Council, councilmember Frios.
No, I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Aranda.
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, no, sorry, councilmember Morris Lopez.
Just a comment. I read through it and I'm really happy that you're requiring that there's street addresses with numbers and not written, you know, no stylized signs. Because that, you know, with a lot of ADUs coming into play, you know, accessory buildings, whatnot, that's really important. Will that also include going back to some of the older buildings in town that do not have a number?
So yes, we could enforce that all the time. We need address markings. So we'll have address markings with contrasting colors. So we could identify it. Just think of us coming in a big old fire engine, trying to find the address, and if we can't see it, that's a life safety issue. We could enforce that all everywhere that doesn't have that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabatia.
Thank you. My only question is you mentioned that Santa Cruz was slightly different. It seems like it's not materially different. Could you expand on what some of those differences might be or the specific?
I don't know what they have different. I know this is what we've had for the last few years.
Okay.
They might have, I, I don't know what their difference is, but the same one that's in Aromas, I would say it's pretty much the same because Aromas Tri-County still use, we use the same code.
Okay.
Because there are three different counties. They might even Monterey, yeah, it's all, they have three different code books they have to look at, but they're all the same.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Public comment. Anybody in chambers?
No speaker cards received, Madam Mayor, but we do have a hand raised and I'm not sure if this is for this item, but we will have her speak. Cara, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Hi. I did review the fire code. Is that what we're discussing at the moment?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question about that and, and it does relate to ADUs. And I think I read that if it's the ADU or the building is under 500 square feet, that no sprinkler, fire sprinklers are required, but then there's something about within 30 feet of some adjacent building. And I, I'd like to get clarification of that. Because if that is the case, then it would, it would seem to me that all buildings, no matter how tiny, even if they're 50 square feet, would have to be fire sprinkled.
Thank you.
Yeah, I could address that. So it's talking about setbacks on some buildings you need to have. They have a certain amount of setbacks required, but as far as the sprinkler ordinance, it's anything brand new residential has to have sprinklers. Okay. And that's different for ADUs. There's different laws because it's under the state, so ADUs, if your main residence has sprinklers, then your ADU has to have sprinklers also. If your main residence does not have sprinklers, then your ADU does not have to have sprinklers. But we do have that caveat in there that anything over 1,200 square feet would have to be sprinkled regardless if it's a ADU or not. So they could designate it as your ADUs to be as big as you want, but on the state, state ADU code, it says anything over 1,200 has to be sprinkled. So that's where it's at. It still gets approved as ADU, but, and then any buildings over 500 square feet has to be sprinkled regardless. Unless there's certain exemptions, but it wouldn't affect anything here in town. Because ag, there's the only ag exemption, you have to be 100 feet from any other structure or any other property lines for ag buildings, but I don't believe there's any properties in here that meet that in the City of San Juan Batista. Does that answer?
Sure. That's okay. Thank you, Cara. Thank you, Chief. Any other public comments?
No other hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm closing public hearing. Back to council comments, councilmember Aranda.
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frios.
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sabatia.
No questions. Thank you for the explanation and for answering that question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
Thanks. Consent agenda. Are there any members from the council who wish to poll? Thought that was falling to wish, any member from the council wish to poll anything on the consent agenda? Councilmember Aranda.
Nope, thank you.
Member Frios. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
No, thank you.
Mayor Protem Sabatia. I don't either. Looks like we're on track. Thank you very much. Any members from the public wish to poll an item on the consent agenda? We're good. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy, for your role.
Thank you.
I move to approve the consent.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by councilmember Frios, seconded by Mayor Protem Sabatia. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Aranda.
Yes.
Councilmember Frios.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sabatia.
Yes.
And Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Action items, San Benito Urban Area Water Supply and Treatment Agreement and Authorization to Proceed with Regional Treated Water Implementation. City manager, are you starting us off on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members of the public. Here to present the item on the San Benito Urban Area Water Supply and Treatment Agreement. Sorry, there was a little feedback from, from Zoom land. For the purposes of this presentation tonight, we do have Dana Jacobson, General Manager for San Benito County Water District, Brett Miller, Assistant General Manager, and Dmitry Semenov, Principal for Regeline Municipal Strategies here to help answer any questions. I'm going to do my best to give a good overview. Dmitry is going to talk about fiscal impacts and financial strategies and then we'll have questions at the end. Can do this. Oops. I think I advanced it one too many. I think I did. Okay, so the slide's up there. Basically, this is a partnership between San Benito County Water District, Hollister, Sunny Slope and San Juan Batista will be its newest partner. In general, we've agreed to receive 8% of regional treatment capacity in this partnership for water. But let me pause here and just start at the beginning, just a little bit. So we all kind of know how we got here. The city's water transmission pipeline represents the second phase of the city's strategy to comply with water quality standards established by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the California Regional Water Quality Control Board. Beyond regulatory compliance, this project enhances water supply redundancy and drought resilience in the city's water system. And so this agreement represents a huge step in project, in our project implementation. Okay. Participation in this agreement enables the city to ensure high-quality treated surface water from regional treatment plants, thereby reducing dependence on aging high-salinity groundwater wells. So I have a little background here. Due to our excessive groundwater salinity, the city's existing water and wastewater systems have long been unable to meet regulatory treatment standards. The high salt content of groundwater has also contributed to excessively hard drinking water. As a result, the city has experienced multiple violations of its MPDS permit, accumulating over a million dollars in fines across more than a decade, triggering enforcement actions by the EPA and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And to resolve these challenges, the city part, is partnering with the San Benito County Water District and the City of Hollister to develop a regional solution. Phase one was to send our wastewater to the modern regional wastewater treatment plant in Hollister for proper treatment. And phase two is to import water from the San Benito County Water District and dilute the city's groundwater to an acceptable salt content. This solution was determined to be the most cost-effective and environmentally responsible alternative. The city has substantially completed phase one of the Forest Main Project, of the project as a whole, and is now advancing to phase two, which is the Water Transmission Pipeline Project. Completion of this project is also a condition of the city's wastewater treatment agreement with Hollister. The project is a 12-inch transmission pipeline that will physically connect the city to the West Hills Treatment Plant, providing the following benefits for the city: improved drinking water quality, compliance with regulatory requirements, compliance with the Hollister Wastewater Treatment Agreement, drinking water supply redundancy, and increased drought resilience. And then, as you recall, in September of this year, we engaged with STANTEC to begin design and environmental permitting of our transmission water project. And just a reminder for everyone here, the project is budgeted at approximately 15 million, but it is subject to refinement during design and permitting. And the city has taken the following steps to ensure that it can pay for the project. We've implemented a water rate increase. We've applied for various grants and earmarks to bring out in outside funding. We've already secured a $1 million commitment from the State of California and we are awaiting formal appropriation of several federal earmarks. And the city will continue to pursue additional grants and earmark opportunities. And the city expects to finance a portion of the project that is not funded with grants and earmarks with long-term tax-exempt debt to minimize financial impacts on its customers. So let's talk a little bit about the agreement itself. And I'll advance the slides forward since I'm going off script. So as I stated earlier, the agreement is a regional partnership between the Water District, Hollister, Sunny Slope County Water District, and now San Juan Batista. And together, these agencies have established a unified framework for producing and distributing high-quality treated surface water to serve the communities in the San Benito Urban Area. So here are the key elements of the agreement. The treated surface water is produced at the West Hills Treatment Plant and it currently has 4.5 million gallons per day. And the city will pursue 8% of total treatment capacity, securing a sustainable treated water supply for the community's residential, commercial, and institutional needs. And the agreement establishes shared water quality objectives, including total dissolved, dissolved solids not exceeding 500 MGs and hardness not exceeding 120, achievable through blending. And the agreement's initial term extends until all capital costs have recovered, or 30 years, whichever is longer, and renews automatically in a 10-year, in 10-year increments thereafter. And at this point, I'll let Dmitry talk about the fiscal impact.
Okay, good evening.
Hey, Dmitry, welcome.
Yep, thank you. Can you hear me well?
Yep, you're good.
All right. So we have slides, but I want to make sure we, do we want to follow the slides or can we just have a discussion? What's the best? Because I think the slides are not necessarily reflecting what, what's being discussed.
I think we can just have a discussion, Dmitry.
Okay. All right. So the financial side of this agreement is kind of in a nutshell, the city will be buying into the, the treatment capacity of the, of the district. And through a series of studies, it has been determined that we need to buy approximately 8% of the treatment capacity. And so once we purchase the treatment capacity, the pipeline will connect the, the West Hills plant with, with the city's water system and will be able to bring in surface water to dilute the groundwater with. As a part of the buy-in, there is two major things that have to happen. One is we're actually buying into the physical facilities that have been built by the district and the facilities were paid for by the City of Hollister and Sunny Slope. And they're actually on a repayment plan with, with the district. So when we come in and, and buy into the system, some of our payments will go to reimburse some of the 8% capacity that, that we're purchasing to Hollister and Sunny Slope to the extent that they've paid for it. And then, once the reimbursement has been done, will help pay off the balance of, of the cost of the facilities. So that's kind of once, one part of the, of the buy-in. And another part of the buy-in is from the beginning, Hollister and Sunny Slope have been contributing to the capital replacement reserve. And we would be also contributing into that reserve as well. So both of those contributions have substantially been included in the previously approved rate study. So that buy-in does not represent any material increase to the rates from what has already been approved a couple of years ago. The only exception is the contribution to the capital replacement reserve will be slightly larger than was approved in the, in the prior rate study because so much time has passed. The project, the water project is taking longer than initially, was initially anticipated. So I want to highlight that buy-in itself does not increase rates, future rates in any material way. It's already been reflected in, in the last rate increase. Okay. So, and then once we've bought into the system, we will be helping cover the fixed and variable costs as well as additional future capital replacement reserves that pertain to the water that's being delivered to San Juan Batista. Okay. And the agreement covers you know, what fixed and variable costs are included. And as well as the variable costs also include the, the airdrop resilience fee. And we'll talk about that in a second. So leaving the airdrop aside, the fixed and variable costs as well as capital replacement reserve contributions have also been substantially covered in the prior rate increase. So it will not result in an additional increase beyond what's normally could be expected from the normal inflation that any water utility is facing. Okay, so just, we really wanted to highlight this, the... This agreement was anticipated last time the rate studies were done. And most of these costs related to this agreement have been captured in the prior rate increases. Now, let's talk about the airdrop. The airdrop is an additional project that has come up since the rate study was done. And the district has gone out of its way to get as much grant funding as possible for that project, and very similar to the situation that we're having. You know, the grants came in, but they couldn't cover the entire project. So the district had to borrow money to pay for the project. And the way it will be paid back by Hollister, Sunny Slope, and San Juan Batista is it's a little bit interesting, but the resilience fee is based on actual water deliveries taken by all the customers of the district. And that not only includes Hollister, San Juan Batista, and Sunny Slope, but also any other customers that take water from the district. So even though our allocation of the airdrop project cost is about $3.2 million, the water resilience fee will be based on actual water deliveries. And the last time we talked to the district, it's anticipated at about $160 per acre foot per year. We've done the math, and the impact on the San Juan Batista customers at the worst-case scenario will be $3.33 per month per account on average. You know, we're talking about residential customers. It's not a significant amount at all, and that's the worst-case scenario. What realistically is going to happen is other customers will be paying for for some of that delivery, some of those deliveries. And the total impact to the city at the worst case is roughly $32,000 a year. So it's not, airdrop is not as as bad as it could appear from the outside. The financial impact is actually very moderate, and most likely will be even less than that. In terms of the repayment, the district is only charging the agencies for the actual capital cost. The district is covering the costs of the interest on the financing themselves, and they're also pursuing additional grants to, if possible, further reduce the cost of the airdrop project that's being passed on to San Juan Batista, Hollister, and Sunny Slope. So those are the fiscal impacts of this agreement. So basically, most of the buy-in and fixed and variable costs are already included in the rate study that was approved a couple of years ago. And then, anything else would be very similar to what we would be facing, the city would be facing, if it tried to maintain water infrastructure themselves. You know, speaking of inflation and, you know, any possible changes to legislation, there's nothing out of ordinary that that agreement calls for. And then, the impact of airdrop is really not that material. Actually, I think that covers it.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Yep. Are there any questions? Do you have any questions for me at this time?
I'm sure. Thanks, thanks, Dimitri. And I also want to thank Dana and Brett for being here for council questions as well. Councilmember Aranda.
Uh, no, other than just, uh, thank you for the presentation. I'm glad we were able to work and find out what the airdrop cost would be. I don't think $3 is that much of a of an impact to our residents here, and on top of that, it's also saving water for a dry year, so I think that's really important. So other than that, I think that's pretty much it. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels.
I just, thank you, Dimitri, as always. Put it out there how we can understand it, and I'm pleasantly surprised about the overall costs, you know, $40 a year for clean drinking water. You know, I pay close to $60 a month for bottled water, so it's kind of a better push. So, and it would be nice to be able to just take water out of tap instead of lugging five-gallon tubs up to the the water bottle all the time, but thank you, it sounds it sounds almost too good to be true, to tell you truth, but I'm happy to hear it. Thanks.
Just to clarify, the fiscal impact that we discussed was only the agreement fiscal impact. The big lift will be paying for the pipeline. And we're not talking about that today.
Yeah, I understood that part, yeah. That's a whole other.
That's something that we'll be working on for the next several years.
Yeah, and somebody's going to have to convince me the difference between 10-inch and 12-inch pipe on a downhill slope, so I understand friction loss fairly well, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you, Dimitri. Something that caught my attention was you said that these rates were based on past rate surveys, and nothing is going to change, even though there's been a lapse in time. But then, in the actual documentation, there's a lot of reference to the necessity for future rate studies. Do you want to touch that, touch on that a little bit?
Right, so the way rate studies work is, they usually cover a certain timeframe. In our case, it's a five-year rate study horizon. So, because things change and, you know, making forecasts is difficult, especially when you start trying to forecast the future. We're actually coming up for a rate study update. I think our rates have been set through June 30, 2027. And it takes close to a year to do a good rate study, to go through the prompting process. So shortly after, probably in the next several months, we'll be starting the next water rate study and making sure that we have adequate rates coming in to pay for all things water. Right? So any changes to the district's rates that we will be paying will be analyzed and incorporated into our rate structure down the road. But we don't anticipate any material changes to the rates because of this agreement. Most of the things that are covered by this agreement are already captured in our prior rates. So future increases would not necessarily be impacted materially by this agreement.
Also, isn't there a vehicle that there is an advisory board or committee made up of constituents for the commercial, for the users or the parties? So before there's any amendments or changes that are brought forth, there would be some sort of way for the cities to to have some sort of input or have some sort of update to the rate increases or the rate changes or the surveys, the studies?
I think the agreement, and maybe, Ashley, you can speak a little bit more to that. But the agreement has a lot of provisions for the cooperation between the district, Hollister, Sunny Slope, and San Juan Batista. There is the Advisory Council. There is a whole process that the city will be following through every year, just like Hollister and Sunny Slope do now, where there's a lot of back and forth and planning, and, you know, we have to work with the district to make sure that they understand our water needs for the year. So it's a very interactive process. It's not that... It's not simple, right? It's, uh, it truly is a partnership relationship. Ashley, do you have anything to add?
No, that was great, and I just, Councilmember Morris Lopez, I just want to clarify. You were talking about the partnership, you were talking about what was in the agreement, correct? And not the process for how we set the rates? Okay.
2027, 28, that there would be a comprehensive study, but what I'm saying is, there's a vehicle so that this committee, or they'd come back to us. So we're going to be kept abreast of all these changes. It's not like we're going to, you know, there's a cooperation, which you just explained. So every step of the way, we are aware of what these studies indicate, what the
Of course, yes. Yes, the purpose of the agreement is that once San Juan Batista becomes a partner, we are at the table. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just a further clarification. At the table is you as the city manager as part of the quarterly meetings for this committee that's made up of all four jurisdictions. Sorry, Mayor Protem Sabaia.
Uh, question, thing that stood out to me, we're buying 8% of the plant's capacity? What percent of our capacity, or average capacity, does that 8% make up? Is that covering 100% of our capacity, 80, 120?
That's a great question. I'll have to get back to you on that very technical question, sir. But I can tell you is that when we did studies that MNS did for us, 8%, they recommended that we import 8%, we needed about 8% to blend. So it is not going to represent, we're not using solely the water that we're getting. We're still going to be relying on our well water to support us.
Yeah, so when you go look at this, the two areas I'm interested in are, again, what percent of our capacity is that? And then, with understanding that we are blending, at the preferred blend rate, what does that get us in terms of percent capacity?
Will do. So does Dimitri have that number?
I do not. That's the world of engineering, and as much as I love numbers, some numbers are just way over my head.
I remember having the conversation, and I can't remember who that was with. And to further expand on that, the, we're getting less than 500 in TDS and less than 120 in solids. That's the 8% that we're getting, that we're blending down our solids and, okay.
Uh, just to clarify, and maybe Dana could confirm that. The limits specified in the agreement, they're meant to indicate to what quality we will be able to achieve by blending. The water that they will be sending to us will be even better quality
Got it.
than, but because of the blending, we'll be able to comply with the standards.
Our blend will be 500 and 120. Okay. Our ultimate blend, what will come into the, through the meter, will be less than or equal to 500 and 120. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Dimitri, I had a question. I'm sorry, are you finished? Thank you. I keep getting stuck on this 30, at least 30 years. If all project costs and interests are fully repaid in 22 years, the agreement still runs eight more years. So, I mean, that's just an example. If the debt takes 35 years to repay, then it runs for 35 years because it's longer than 30. Can you, can you explain that to me? If we pay in 22, why, why there's still 30 years? We're not paying anything for 30 years, or how does that, how does that work?
So I believe, I believe that's the amortization of some of the payments. But once the debt portion is covered, the agreement continues to be in place for at least 30 years. And at that point, we would only be responsible for the, you know, fixed and variable costs of getting the water delivered to us. The capital portion would be, you know, would go away.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm getting this. Article three talks about the quantity of treated water to be provided. So the district's total delivery to San Juan is capped at 6.5 million gallons a day. And we can't, we can't ask for more. That's our, that's our buy-in. That number is our number from today going forward. Correct? Sorry, come on up, Dana, sorry.
Certainly, of course. Well, that's correct, so it's fixed in perpetuity unless you ask for something more. To the extent that the other partners are not using any additional capacity, you can use that capacity. For example, you have, you know, it'll be flexible. It'll be flexible, so if there's higher demand in San Juan Batista one day and lower the next, you know, we can share use of that capacity without any impact to the other partners.
Okay, okay, that's perfect.
If you did need more water on an average basis, there would need to be an adjustment.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you for that. Really thrilled that we actually have a seat at the table. That was pretty awesome. I appreciate that. I might have had one more thing. Nope, I think I think Dimitri covered everything very well. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks, Dana. Thank you, Dimitri. Do we have any questions, comments, and concerns from chambers?
Uh, yes, Michael Poncy, followed by Bob Quaid.
Thank you. Hi, Michael, welcome. You're lit up, right?
No, I am.
Thank you, Michael. You have three minutes.
Michael Poncy, 803 First Street. So there are a lot of questions I have, but I don't have the time, so I'm going to try to concentrate on what I think is the most important question. So in the original agreement, we had a buy-in of $3 million. Now, to satisfy the new agreement, we have to add airdrop, which is another $3 million. My question is, and this is probably for Dimitri, is it says that the cost to per account for airdrop is $3.33 a month. Doesn't seem like a whole lot. But my question is, does that $3.33 include all the other expenses on Exhibit C, which is page 31 of the the agreement? There's, Exhibit C says explanation of cost of components. There are a whole lot of different fees there. Capital treatment component, reliability fee, capital replacement reserve component, fixed operational administrator fee. All those fees on page 31 and 32. Does that $3.30 per account pay for those fees? I'm just
Yeah, can I answer that question?
Sure, but you're going to eat up some of my time.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead and finish it. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, so my concern is, I mean, $3.33 doesn't sound Okay, so my concern is, I mean, three dollars and thirty-two cents doesn't sound like a whole lot. Sounds like a pretty good deal. But my concern is hidden fees on top of that, three dollars and thirty-two cents down the road. I know we have to pay for the cost of water. But this three dollars and thirty-three cents state, is stated that it's only for the additional a drop fee of three million dollars that is added to the contract, which was never in the contract in the very beginning. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Can I answer the question?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Dimitri.
Yeah, so three thirty-three is a drop only. And that's the worst case scenario. Everything else is, you know, all the line items that were mentioned, they are the part of the, even the MOU that we had from the beginning, they were covered by that, by that MOU. And they are covered substantially to the extent that, you know, inflation might have changed some numbers. But they're covered by the current rate structure. So in terms of hidden fees, I'm not aware of any. And everything we've seen so far in our conversations and working with the district, the district has been very fair with the city of San Juan Batista. They're very mindful of the costs and really looking for ways to make this project being a drop as well as our project, because there is quite a bit of cooperation on, on the design of the pipeline, make it as effective as possible. So in terms of the structure, I don't, I don't believe there's any hidden fees. The structure of the payments is the same structure as Hollister and Sunny Slope are paying. And they're really meant to, A, reimburse Hollister, Sunny Slope and the district for the costs of the treatment facilities that we're buying into. And then reimburse the ongoing fixed and variable costs of getting the, the clean water from the district. So that's, that's my take on, on the agreement.
Thanks, Dimitri. Bob Quaid? Hi Bob, welcome.
There it is. I, well, one of my questions was answered, but how are we blending the water when it gets back to San Juan? How are we going to be guaranteeing that we're going to be getting good quality water when we mix it? How do we come up with that percentage to make sure? Because we were in the hallway discussing this earlier and Cynthia, I know her, I used to work with Cynthia. And she's in the Sunny Slope Water District and she was mentioning that her water wasn't any better after the treated waters over in Hollister. They still, she had to put the softener back in. So I'm just wondering, what's the process of the blending and how are we gonna make sure that we're getting good quality water so I can get rid of my water softener?
I, I appreciate that you're getting rid of your water softener. Thank you. Go ahead, city manager. Where's MNS when I need them?
Right?
Answer all these highly technical questions. Poor Jerry, I'm not gonna put him on the spot. He is on, he is on the call. Bob, I'm gonna get back to you. That's a technical question that needs a little more nuance. But I will get back to you. Thank you for that. Do we have any public comment on Zoom land?
No hands raised on Zoom, Meta Mayor.
Thank you very much. Back to the council. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Aranda?
No, thank you for the presentation. It was clear and really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Freels.
Just other than I've, I've had the, the opportunity of watching Dimitri and a couple of different levels. Talking finances and water and, and if Dimitri's good with these numbers, then I'm definitely good with the numbers. And I kind of like the regional water co-op. You know, premise, it's, it's, it's a long time coming in this county because, you know, I don't think we struggle that much with water. But it's, it's nice to hear, especially after you said that, you know, if we don't use all our water, somebody else can help or if they can help somebody else. I mean, that's, that's a good thing. I mean, our counties, we were, we were doing pretty good a few years ago in communication and working together and, and I'm, I'm hoping to see that come back. So thank you all and thank you, Dimitri.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you for the presentation for everybody involved. I think this has been a long, long journey for all of us that have lived here, you know, more than a few decades to get to this point. And I think it's a solution to all of the issues that we're having, that we've had in the past. And so this is a good, good solution. It's a cooperative arrangement. It's good to know that if we don't use our water, someone else can share it. And I think it's important, the a drop, I know originally it wasn't in the, in the, in the works, but it's something much needed, you know, consideration for, you know, the high drought years and, and having the reserves. So something that we really have to be mindful for in our future. So I think it's a good deal and I'm glad that as Councilmember Freel said, that it's, it's a long time coming to have a regional, regional agreement. The thing that I had concerns about, you know, we don't have control over nature. We don't have control over some of the finances. I know right now it seems pretty stable. The people that are in charge with the projected numbers have done everything they can to keep them where they're at. But you know, honestly, it's, you know, there's a lot of things happening out of our control at the state level and also at the federal level. So, you know, we just have to hope for the best. But we need good drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabatia.
No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Little less arduous than it was before, Dana. I, I appreciate Dimitri always. Breaking, breaking those millions of dollars into pennies is, is a wonderful trait to be able to do. I appreciate the city's forethought in our initial rate study covering most of these costs before we got to this point. It's always nice to see collaboration, cooperation and communication. And we had that, as, as Councilmember Freel said, we had that a couple of years ago between all three jurisdictions. It's been a little rough this past year, but to have San Benito County Water District come in and work with all three jurisdictions or all the entities involved has been pretty amazing. Our water is absolutely a hundred percent drinkable as it is. I just want to share that with everybody. It will be more usable for the community as we move forward with this project. So I appreciate that as well to get rid of softeners that put us in, in the bind, somewhat of a bind that we are now, that we now find ourselves in. It'll be nice to, to get rid of some of that. My one issue with this is that at the bottom, it says the city of Hollister. Are we getting that changed? Or are we just lining it out and putting SJB?
At this point, we just need to line it out. That was a clerical error.
Yeah.
Apologize for that.
As, i- if you talk to anybody in the city of Hollister or the county, my biggest pet peeve is that the city of San Juan Batista, as tiny as we are, we are very mighty. And to have that was kind of a bummer.
I know, understood. We changed the name of the agreement for you. It used to call the Hollister urban area.
Thank, uh, thanks. I, I appreciate that.
Yep.
And our logo's on the front. So yay. We are the city of San Juan Batista. We are mighty and we do appreciate being in this agreement with you. Uh, thank you very much. I will sign these. Do you need them right this very second? Thank you. Huh? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we have to vote on that. Sorry, maybe not. Uh, okay, may I have a, a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the San Benito urban area water supply treatment agreement and implement related actions in coordination with San Benito County Water District and participating agencies? Hold on one second. I have noticed that it is the mayors who have been signing this. It was my understanding that it was the city manager that was supposed to do that. Is that an issue?
I stand corrected, Mayor.
Okay.
Sign it.
So approve a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of San Juan Batista to accept, to execute the San Benito urban water supply and treatment agreement and to implement related actions in coordination with San Benito County Water District and participating agencies.
So moved.
No second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Aranda, seconded by Councilmember Freels. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sabatia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I will sign these in a moment. Thank you. Historic Resources Board and Planning Commission vacancies, city clerk. City manager, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the public, members of the council. So at our last meeting on the Planning Commission, we had a vacancy. Ida Pisano resigned. So that left a vacancy. So now we're asking, since we have a current, we do have two applications that we had received from the first go around. So we're asking the city, city council to consider having the previously appointed ad hoc committee comprised of the city of the mayor and Mayor Protem Sabatia to come back with their get together and then come back and make a recommendation to the rest of the board to fill that vacancy.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Aranda?
Yeah, my comment would be rather than go back and just look at the prior candidates, I would like to reopen it and see if we can get and then second, the other comment that I would have is I would also be interested in being part of the ad hoc committee. If that's something we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Freels?
I'm, I'm good with the ad hoc committee and if we were to reopen it, I'd definitely put a an abbreviated timeframe so it doesn't stretch this out too far. But I'm good with either. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Comments and questions? So how much time is left on the, the the position or the commissioner that resigned? How much time is left on her tenure?
December twenty twenty-six.
So we have a whole year. We're closing out our year in three months. We have a quorum if we still have four out of five, correct?
Correct.
So my comment or question just to throw out there, what is the urgency of getting that seat filled if we have a quorum? And we go into the new year, we give a little bit more time for applicants? Or we can do what someone suggested is we did have quite a few applicants with the last round? I would be, whatever the majority wants, but I'm just like, what is the urgency if we have a quorum? Something to throw out there.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we have a full body. We have a lot of important projects coming up. And we just want to make sure that we have a, a full body, but there's no urgency if the council decides that they want to wait and leave that vacancy. It's, it's up to the council.
Okay. For my comment also, some of the feedback I got from the previous applicants. We have to be really mindful with the committee that's going to be doing the interviewing, that you are very accommodating and that you don't leave people hanging when they say they can't meet a certain day. There needs to be some follow-up on that. And there also needs to be some accountability from our ad hoc committee to do that because there were applicants, more than one, that did tell me that they were not, they were not notified when they weren't chosen, there were discrepancies in when they could meet. So, you know, if we're gonna do this, I think we need to have accountability. And I think that maybe if we have a third body on there, I'm kind of in agreement with Councilmember Aranda. If he would like to be on that ad hoc committee as well.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabatia.
With respect to the committee, I would love to, to continue to serve on that ad hoc committee with you. Been pretty proud of our, our fair and professional process as far as interviewing. And as much as we can, you know, there's, there's records and receipts of all the, all the interviews and, and things that have gone through with it, with everyone. Pretty proud of the fact that we actually have a body of questions that we can go back to each time. You know, to keep looking, looking at the, at candidates fairly through there. I don't have, I'm not super particular on, on if we, I think we still had, I mean, we had a lot of great candidates, but okay to either open up or go back through the list of candidates, whatever, whatever the majority of the rest of the council wants to do. I'm okay either way on that.
Thank you for that. I thought we did a phenomenal job with record keeping and, and questions and, and getting back to everybody and making sure that it was across the board, that everybody was hearing the same, the same spiel. In, as far as holding off, I, I think the sooner that we get this done, the better. We have a brand new department coming on at the end of this month. By next week, we'll have a full-on planning commission. We do have a lot of things that are coming up in front of the commission, the planning commission and the HRB. So for expedience, expediency, I would prefer to move sooner than later. If the candidates that we have on record choose not to participate again, then I'm all for opening it up again. But to, to get this moving faster so that everybody is starting at the same time, my preference would be to move sooner than later. So if we could open it up to public comment.
No speaker cards received, Meta Mayor, and seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, back to the council, Councilmember Aranda?
Uh, just, yeah, going back to what I said and on my previous comment, I would prefer to, I, I also agree with you where I think we should see this through, since we have a lot of huge items coming up to the planning commission and HRB. But also, again, I still would like to open it up and give others an opportunity to apply and see what comes back and move forward in finding a planning commissioner as well as also joining the committee to, to select a new planning commissioner.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels?
I have a question for the city clerk. If we add a third person, then you're gonna have to follow the, the Brown Act and the agendas and the posting and all that stuff.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it doesn't really create an ad, it's no longer truly an ad hoc?
It is because this ad hoc is just here to do one thing and then, you know, it's gone after that.
Okay, I'm, I'm all for making it as less complicated as possible. And there are some good points that came up from our city clerk. And there are some good points that came up um, from our city clerk. We have some, we have new planners coming on board. Um, it would be nice to get the whole planning commission together as soon as possible to make sure everybody's up to date. And um, moving forward, we do, I mean, just like the gas station project, stuff like that coming up. There's going to be some big stuff. So um, I, I, I understand why the urgency, but I guess the urgency now would be we need to get everybody on the same page as soon as possible. So I'm okay with running off, now hearing all that, I'm okay with running off the current list.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
I also believe that since we're saying that it's an urgent matter, that we did have some good applicants last time. And I feel that we should go back. I'm suggesting and recommending to the ad hoc committee that they look at those candidates if we're going to talk about expediency and urgency. Um, and um, I don't know, I mean, it, you know, in all fairness, we have a council member that would like to be included. I don't know how that can happen. Um, so, you know. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabatia? Sorry.
I'm in favor of moving forward with the recommendation as it's written.
Uh, okay. So, yeah, I've already said what I wanted to say. Uh, so I will, um, can I have a motion to reappoint the previously established city council ad hoc committee comprised of Mayor Jordan and Mayor Protem Sabatia to review prior candidate applications for Planning Commission Historic Resource Board and provide a recommendation to the city council to fill the current vacancy. And I would like to add, um, if, um, and this is up for discussion, um, add that if the, the candidates that we don't have, that we have currently choose not to, that we go out.
Does the maker of the motion accept uh, the mayor's um, addition?
Yes. And officially so moved.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, motion made by uh, Mayor Protem Sabatia, seconded by Councilmember Friel's. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
No.
Councilmember Friel's?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
No.
Mayor Protem Sabatia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, informational items and reports, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, council members of the public. Uh, forewarn you, I have a long report. And I will be reading every word. For the record, um, while I have not given a formal presentation to the council since June, I have reported out verbally quite a bit of this information. But for the benefit of the public tonight, um, I'm going to um, have a presentation and, and a formal report. And copy, the clerk also has copies, uh, if the public requests. Oh, they're in the back. Never mind. Thank you. All right. So, um, so here it is. City operations have continued to mature through sustained attention to infrastructure planning, fiscal management, staff development, and community engagement. From mid-June through October, the organization is focused on implementing the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, completing city hall improvements, advancing major water and wastewater projects, expanding regional coordination efforts, and strengthening staffing capacity to meet increasing service demands. So, let's see. Next slide. Okay. Key city manager activities under leadership, governance, and administration. Um, we have, we transitioned from the budget adoption to full implementation in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, aligning departmental work plans and capital priorities. We have continued our internal bi-weekly executive team meetings and all staff meetings to promote communication accountability and team cohesion. Uh, oversaw the completion of the city hall improvement project, which included new flooring and cubicle installations in July, with staff temporarily relocating to alternate sites uh, during construction. Uh, we strengthened administrative capacity with several key hires. An interim recreation assistant to support community programs and events. A senior planner to oversee long-range and current planning efforts. An associate planner to advance housing, land use, and environmental review work. A part, and a part-time permit technician to streamline front counter and permitting operations. And I also oversaw the overhaul of employee policies in collaboration with RGS and the city clerk's office. And managed organizational continuity through training, scheduling, uh, coordination, and updated internal processes during the summer and early fall. And then, under inter-agency coordination and strategic partnerships, we maintained regular coordination with the San Benito County Water Management District and attended, and I've also attended reoccurring Forest Main and Water Main microbe meetings with Dimitri M and S. Uh, the list goes on. And then we also continued collaboration with regional and local partners to support coordinated planning for water, wastewater, and housing initiatives. Next slide, please. So, under infrastructure development and compliance, um, so we have advanced to work on our water transmission pipeline project with Stan Tech, the district, including technical coordination and pre-design milestones. And then I have an update on our wastewater project. So phase one of the city's wastewater treatment plant, domestic wastewater conveyance project, or also known as the Forest Main project, has reached substantial completion. The city of San Juan Batista is now successfully transmitting domestic wastewater, both residential, commercial, and industrial domestic waste, to the city of Hollister for treatment, marking a significant milestone in regional infrastructure collaboration. Following a brief pause in activity over the summer, phase two of the project is now underway and will focus on decommissioning the existing treatment plant and implementing a series of facility improvements and maintenance upgrades, including roof, electrical, and SCADA system enhancements. We've also continued wastewater compliance discussions with our regulatory partners. And we've initiated formal discussions with key industrial domestic wastewater users, i.e. Taylor Farms, Coke Farms, and Trulieve, to address our shared commitment and partnership. And we've engaged a consultant to conduct site visits and facility tours are scheduled this month to support agreement finalization. The city is in the process of developing these agreements, and they're currently being drafted in coordination with outside counsel. Um, we also supported progress on the gas station project, coordinating staff and consultant review throughout the summer and early fall, and we're hoping to finalize the agreement by the end of the year. Um, we're also, I've also overseen a PO system implementation and staff training to improve fiscal transparency and workflow efficiency. Next slide, please. Regularly attending HRB planning commission meetings. Um, and on October seventh, the Historic Resources Board and Planning Commission unanimously approved proposals submitted by the Spirit of San Juan for the installation of a commemorative bench honoring Mr. Richard Ponse. The bench is proposed to be located along Third Street, adjacent to a Nacas restaurant within the city's historic downtown core. The item will be presented to the city council on November eighteenth as an action item for consideration of the applicant's request for fee waivers associated with the installation. We've also advanced housing element implementation and planning activities to meet state housing goals. And we supported local community and business engagement efforts, including the Spirit of San Juan and small business coordination initiatives. So, community uh, and economic engagement. So, I've represented the city at numerous community events, including, I attended the Junior Giants opening ceremony in the summer. This week, I attended the San Benito Leadership, or last week, excuse me, San Benito Leadership Institute Panel on Civic Engagement and Leadership. Um, I was a panelist there. It was fantastic opportunity to work with, to meet local leaders and to also discuss what San Juan Batista is doing in our community engagement and leadership efforts. Um, and I also attended a Women's Empowerment Summit on Saturday, uh, sponsored uh, by Mrs. Baines. Um, that was also a fantastic event, well-attended, um, and, and look forward to, to doing more of that. Under community engagement, we also created a policy for the city to co-sponsor special events in San Juan Batista, assisting nonprofits with alleviating the burden of permit fees. Um, and we assisted in planning and coordination for fall and winter activities and holiday planning, including the Dia de los Muertos event that's coming up on November first and second, and the Holiday Lights Parade, um, at the Rotary Gives. So, public safety and intergovernmental coordination. I gotta take a deep breath, because that's a lot. Um,
You can breathe in between words.
Take a deep breath. Okay, okay, so facilitated the reinstatement of the contract with Baker Tilly to continue with the fire district feasibility study and attended some fire protection committee meetings on August seventh and October second. We are continuing our partnership with Hollister Fire. We've, and also staff has participated in the fire captain promotional process this month. And the city also attended the hundred-and-fiftieth ceremonial uh, celebration um, in, in, in the city of Hollister. And then I've also overseen some regulatory compliance and reporting updates uh, so that we're in alignment with inter-agency requirements. Next slide, please. So, under organizational development and upcoming engagements. So, we've implemented some staff onboarding and cross-training for new hires, focusing on customer service and permit workflow improvements. We are currently working with San Jose State University students to update the inventory tracking system in Public Works, as well as updating their work order request system. And this ensures accurate record-keeping and tracking for all materials used for work performed within the city. And those same, well, a different group of SJSU students are also helping us update the city's website to be more user-friendly and to reduce redundancies. We are continuing to collaborate with RGS to update employee policies and enhance our HR systems. And I have provided mentorship and professional development opportunities for department leads. And then, I'm also preparing to attend the ICMA Annual Conference uh, this year in Tampa, Florida, to participate in sessions on municipal innovation, small city management, and workforce development. And then here's a list of the near-term priorities. So, regulatory compliance, continue negotiations with regulators for reasonable chloride limits in San Juan Batista. Economic development. Explore revitalization efforts for Third Street businesses and assess the potential for Main Street program funding opportunities. Public safety. Support the fire district feasibility study and re-establish the public safety subcommittee to address fire and animal control agreements. And under community development and historic preservation, we need to review the infill development plan and also advance efforts on the urban growth boundary adjustments and the LAFCO application. And then, lastly, under administration and organizational development, we need to begin exploring options to enhance staff benefits and retirement contributions to improve retention. And, um, in conclusion, we have strengthened the city's internal capacity, advanced a critical capital and compliance projects, and deepened engagement with regional partners and with the community. And with new staff on board, modernized systems in place, and strong organizational momentum, San Juan Batista is well, well-positioned to continue improving service delivery and achieving long-term strategic goals as we move into the close of the calendar year. And then I thought I had a pictures of staff, but I guess I didn't. And I apologize. So, on October twenty-seventh, um, we have an associate planner and a senior planner. Um, and I can, I think I can safely announce their names. Um, Ariel Goodspeed, um, who is currently the principal planner for San Benito County, will be starting as our senior planner um, on October twenty-seventh. As, as well as uh, Victor Tafoya. He will be, he's also with the county. He will be coming over as our associate planner. And we are extremely excited to welcome them aboard, um, and look forward to working with them. Uh, we also have um, a young man by the name of Manuel the Doll. He started on Monday. He is going to be our permit tech. He is, uh, lives in Aromas. His, uh, his, his family attends the mission. He is well-versed in, in the goings of our area. Um, he's a college student, so we're looking forward to having him work with us as well. Um, and Jasmine Parker um, is our interim recreation assistant, who has hit the ground running over the last several weeks, coordinating with Anzar High School, San Juan School, on how we can get the kids what they need in terms of recreation programming. Um, and so we look forward to having her here for the next several months to help us continue to build upon um, what we need to make a solid foundation in our recreation department. And with that, I will take any questions.
Breathe. Thank you, Councilmember Aranda.
Uh, oh, man, where do I start? Um, just to say, you knocked it out of the park, a ballpark again. Um, great work, Ashley. Um, a big win on the senior planner, um, associate planner, and one of the biggest things for me is the part-time permit tech. Um, I think that's really important. Um, I, I, one of the biggest struggles of things that I've seen is we take forever with permits, so I hope to see um, the turnaround time lesson. So, great work on that. Um, thank you again for the city hall. It looked like redoing it, looks great. Um, huge win on the wastewater treatment um, plant, and thank you for moving the gas station forward. I know that's going to be a huge um, a, a huge thing for us, once we, we start seeing some revenue coming out of that thing. Um, one thing that impressed me was the SJSU students updating the uh, city website. That's really neat. Um, thank God, because I, I hate to say it, but I hate our website. I mean, it, I don't know how many clicks it is just to go pay a water bill. So, um, I'm looking forward to seeing that uh, redone and also huge, one question on the, you said they're also working on developing a PO system?
No, we, it, actually, we've, we've implemented a PO system.
Oh, good.
And tracking in our finance department.
That's really good. I'm, after seeing the stuff going down with the uh, county, uh, that was worrying me, and I forgot to mention that at our last meeting. Um, so definitely would love to see, make, make sure that, you know, we have some some um, rules in place that prevent us from just making, you know, little mistakes here and there. So, great work. Other than that, um, let me see, I think I flagged something else. Oh, and um, great work on trying to enhance staff benefits and retirement. I'm, I'm sad to see a lot of um, good, good staff leave just because we don't offer the benefits. So I would love to see where that goes and so, other than that, great, great work. Holy cow. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Friel's?
Thank you. It was a it's a long four years and four months, it seems like. All this list. Um, I, I think it's great that you are, you, you and Roy are doing um, the bi-weekly staff meetings. Um, it's, it's something we've needed for years and, um, it's nice to get everybody on the same page. And, you know, we've talked about this, the, the more information you give people, the less they make up. So it's nice to get across the board. I don't know how many times I've been stopped by people saying, hey, I heard this and I heard that. And, and now we have the actual facts out there because you're filling everybody in. This is great. I think I may have to go to Tampa Bay with you, just, you know, as a chaperone, you know, since I'm a Buccaneer fan, but um, and, and also on, and once again, we went, you know, we're talking about um, wastewater and water, um, you know, cooperation. So there's some more regional cooperation, which is just huge and I, and it's much needed. And I know the state's pushing some of that, um, which is something I actually agree with, with the state, which is hard to believe. Um, but it's good stuff. So thank you. Um, you're, you do know. And the PO system's fantastic. That's, I, I totally agree with um, Jose. Yeah, no, no shenanigans. So, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, thank you, um, Ashley. That was a great report. Just have um, questions, probably more so for me, but also the public. So we have two, we have a full, fully staff planning department um, with um, a senior planner and associate planner. And then we have a permit tech that you said would be And then we have a permit tech that you said would be a college, he is a college student. So, I'm assuming he's part-time. So, what would be his hours for the public to be aware of?
So, his hours, I believe, are gonna be eleven to four, Monday through Friday. And he is part-time, so twenty to twenty-five hours.
Okay, thank you. And then, does that include, is it accessible to schedule an appointment with him online, or do they have to come to the front desk?
They will have to come to the front desk and or call, but he will, he also has an email. He'll have an email address. So, they'll be able to reach him that way, too.
Great. And then, you said we have a rec tech?
A recreation assistant.
Assistant, okay. And then she is temporary, part-time?
Interim, so part, very part-time. She's working on specific goals for the city. She has been in and out of City Hall. She is reachable by email and by appointment.
So, about roughly, how many hours a week does she work?
I believe it's ten.
Ten, okay. And so, she's picking up with some, already some determined goals that we had, or we left off?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Will she be doing a little bit of collaboration with, I know we have a lot of senior activity in town, and I recall that was one of the goals that we had, was the youth, the seniors. Is she gonna?
So, I can't recall, I gave her a huge list when she started, because really, the goal for her, she is, she has over twenty years' experience in recreation from other cities. And she was a coach, a cheerleading coach, and so she has a day job, too. So, she's doing this for us, kind of on the side. But the main goal and objective is for her to lay the foundation and set a, set the timeline, do the standard operating procedures for the department, and then help us find and train somebody to take it over.
Gotcha.
So, that's the, but yes, I will make sure that is also on.
Okay. And I'm assuming that with the senior planner and the associate planner, you will no longer have to attend the HRB and Planning Commission meetings?
Yes, I'm gonna attend virtually, is my goal, because I always wanna be, I wanna be in the know.
Sure.
But the most exciting thing is that our city clerk will no longer have to attend them. And they will be responsible for the managing of that, that particular program, and they will answer to the clerk to make sure their minutes and agendas.
So, they'll be doing agendas, minutes, and then training, any training with the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay.
And the goal of the, the goal for planning in the planning staff is that they staff the Planning Commission to the level that I staff the City Council. So, it's a pretty high bar. But that's the goal.
Okay. And they've got a lot on the horizon to work with.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian.
I was gonna initially use the word fear, but fear would have been an overstatement. I was concerned with the amount of work and, you know, split-brainness that would have to happen with you coming in, different projects and priorities. But not only the progress, but the progress, the communication, and the leadership that you've exuded, you know, and just taking down task over task has been amazing. Turning over morale, dealing with different issues, like all of it, it's just been, and it's the kind of thing where it's not just the communication afterwards. It's like, hey, there's an issue. Making the council aware that there's an issue. Need to go make a plan to do the thing, make a plan, and then deliver on that plan. It's like, I feel great about my decision to vote to hire for you. But yeah, echoing a lot of the same thoughts that everybody else says. I don't have any specific questions about what you presented, but.
Thank you. I don't either. Very well said, very well said, and ditto. Amazing to look out at staff and, or come into City Hall and see the the change physically, facial expressions, see a lot more smiles out there, while getting the job totally done and going above and beyond, and I appreciate you. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from, on any of that from chambers?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Hi, Michael. Welcome back.
Hello, Michael Ponce. It'll be for you. I just wanna say, I appreciate the manager's, city manager's report after missing it for a couple of months. I look forward to it, and I continue to look forward to it in the coming months. The only question I have is on your five economic and community engagement. Says that you created a policy for the city to co-sponsor special events in San Juan Batista, assisting nonprofits, and alleviating the burden of permit. Where can we do that policy? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Do we have any questions, comments on Zoom?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Ms. Kara Vonk, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, Kara. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to offer myself as a guinea pig for the website improvement project. It's very frustrating to try to find things on the website, and especially finding the city agendas and the staff reports, you know, the packets. You're directed to one place where they don't appear, and, you know, searching all over the place to get to the right place to get it. And so, I am a senior, and so, I'm not as technically astute, maybe, as younger people. But I think I could really help whoever's gonna be looking at that to at least tell them what some of my issues are, that perhaps could be corrected. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Fire Sheriff, Public Safety. I'm sorry, did we have any other further comments from council? Thank you. Take it away.
Good report.
Hello, good evening. So, I wanna open up my presentation first with just a reminder for Dia de los Muertos and a quick update on that. And this is after talking to Dan De Vries for most of the last three weeks. I think I talk to him every single day. So, just a quick update, he does have, he was able to secure sponsorship from AT&amp;T. That's fairly new, so that's a major sponsor for this event. He's also secured Driscoll as a major partner in this event. And just so you know, we have our recreation person that the city manager mentioned earlier. She's constantly on the phone with Dan as well. We've got recology involved. We've got waste management, Sheriff's Office Explorers, who will be there as well. And Old Mission San Juan, State Parks, I mean, the collaboration on this event is amazing. Everybody's been getting along. We've got some of you on council also helping out. So, we're hoping that this becomes, I've said it before, I'll say it again, staple event. Maybe similar to like the rodeo in Salinas. Maybe this could be our garlic festival here. But, you know, a good, safe event, and something we could all benefit from, as well as the nonprofits. They can start benefiting from this, and I know that's something Dan and I have been talking about for the future events. So, everybody can benefit from this event. So, that's just a quick update on that. Any questions on Dia de los Muertos? No? Hope to see you all there. It's coming up.
Do you, I have a question. Do you have like a volunteer signup list for people that wanna help?
Dan has that. I don't wanna get too, I don't wanna take too much on. So, very careful with that. Okay, so the Law &amp; Fire monthly update. For the Sheriff's Office, they did just assign somebody as a crime analyst. So, we've been talking about this for a bit. I found that out through an email from this, the, I'm not sure if they were a deputy before or their exact position, but they are a crime analyst. So, I've been working with that person. I presented her a couple graphs and stuff that we used to use over in Santa Cruz County for her to use for us. I'm happy to say that there, when she asked for information based on our statistics provided to us from our deputy, there's not much to report. That's a good sign. I take that as a good sign. But she is gonna start working on graphs and stuff like that for us, to try to make more presentable for you. But there was a residential burglary at five hundred block of Washington Street, where the homeowner confronted the suspect in the backyard. I don't have much on that in the small, short report on that. There was a theft arrest on Monterey Street from a storage locker, and these people were involved, or the suspects were involved in some local burglaries. There was a burglary on Lang Street, but there was reported that with, I was texting the deputy earlier. He said it was a misplaced safe, that the victim later came back and found that safe with the firearm. So, I just wanted to make sure, like I said, I was texting him earlier just to get specific information on that. There was arrest for a theft from a car on Lang Street. Suspect was located at the shed, as I said. And there were some social media posts on that, so I think that's what that report was all about. And then, as far as the fire, we have a long history with our fire department. I think it's getting, it's improving through the fire district committee meetings, through our relationship with our local station. And then also recently, I was one of the panelists for their captain promotional exam, which was an eye-opener. I just wanna give these guys kudos for what they had to go through. It was, it was four different interviews that each person had to submit themselves to. They had to study for it. It was, it's, it's a lot more than law enforcement. Just let me put it that way. I was very surprised. But the quality of people that they have, I was, I was very impressed. So, there was nine candidates, and they're hoping to promote soon.
Oh, okay. That, I'm sorry, that wasn't part of the promotions the other day?
No, that was just ceremony.
I'll be darned. Okay, thank you.
Emotional for fire captain, which is like the first-line supervisor for the local crews. So, their September report was three fires on the county, sixteen medical calls, nine vehicle accidents, one within the city, a normal area, one fifty-six at the Alameda, and one special event inspection, and then a residential sprinkler system. Any questions about Law &amp; Fire?
Can we talk about the success of our flock cameras on the north side of town?
Sure. So, I was gonna cover that next month, but since it's an eyesore, when you're leaving town at the roundabout, there was a semi that drove right through that thing and destroyed our fence line there at the roundabout. I saw it that morning of, or the next morning of, called our code enforcement officer. He searched through our flock system. Were able to identify the semi truck from photos. We, we went through the video, saw the actual accident, saw the driver come out, shake his head, like, what have I done type of thing? It's a really good video. But with that, we were able to get the information, like I said, from the front door, the tail number of the, of the actual semi trailer, worked with, with our partners at, man, that's escaping, not Trulieve, but Taylor Farms. Their management got ahold of us, provided times, license plate numbers, and everything else, which we then provided the Sheriff's Office. We have since been in contact with that company, who's agreed to pay for all damages. So, we're working that out through the city clerk and everybody else. But, yeah, flock was a major winner on that. What I did, that happened, what, two weeks ago? I was out of town when it happened. I was in Mexico, but, yeah. So, that, that was a success. In regards to flock, one thing I found out, the Sheriff's Office did not have access to our system for the last two to three weeks. And the reason for that is they just contracted with flock for their own systems. So, when they did that, they were booted off our system. So, I was talking to flock management and the Sheriff's Office with the analyst, because she was the one that alerted me to it, and we were able to get them back on track. So, they have full access to our system. And, okay. Code enforcement update, one-stop work order, seven new cases, five mini-code violations, which included a car, for say, on a public street, parking violation, and a vehicle parked over seventy-two hours. And then, major update for the properties we've been discussing probably for the last half year. We have entered into two receiverships into some properties, and I covered them earlier in the year. I think most of you know which ones those are, so I'm not gonna mention the addresses. And we're hoping to do that with a couple of other properties in the near future. Other homeowners or property owners that are not responding to our constant emails, constant communications, that are just not responding to us. And some of those properties, we've discussed numerous times at these meetings. So, we're doing that as well. And then, real quick on the recreation, it's not in your slides, but our recreation person, even though they just work ten hours a week, blows up my phone as well. And she's also been in contact with Rotary, and they're trying to, we're working out the Holiday Lights and everything else like that. So, that person is well-aware of all the events that are coming up. She's starting to make her contacts. Her network is just growing within the city. So, very excited to work with her, very excited to connect her with our new planning manager, Ariel, to get all these special events moving in a timely manner, and get them approved in a timely manner. And, I mean, I think that we have five different events on our, that have been major in our city, the lights, the Rotary, I can't remember, the run, the Rainbow Run, some, you know, things like that. So, we're super excited about that. And it's gonna be a good thing. So, great partnership coming up. And I provided Mr. Ponce with the policy and other stuff, so I heard him ask, and I had it with me. I covered that. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Aronda.
Yeah, actually, going back to the flock system, do you receive any alerts? So, so when that system goes offline with the sheriff, you guys aren't aware, flock is not aware, they don't call you to say, hey, our system?
No, we're not, we're not law enforcement. So, the Sheriff's Office is supposed to be.
So, the sheriff should, they, they're the ones that get an alert that say, okay, so that's, okay, so they were aware, they were working it out three weeks.
Yes.
Okay. All right, got it. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that when that system goes offline, that someone gets a notification, we're aware, and we're working it. We're not just letting it sit there for weeks, and then all of a sudden, because you decided to check on something like a truck hitting a fence, then that's when we become aware. So, yeah, other than that, great work. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Friel.
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you for the good report. I have a question about the flock cameras also. Can you place them in different locations, depending, like I'm hearing about the uptick and, or not uptick, but the actual crime that's on Lang Street, Washington? Can you move them from one location to the next based on the need?
So, we can, but they charge us for that. Yeah, it's part of the contract.
Really?
Anytime we move those cameras, they charge us.
You can't just put it on the back of your truck and move it?
I'm not messing with that system. Everything comes with the cost, so that's one of those costs, as do additional cameras.
Yeah.
And if you want the cameras that are just license plate readers, those are cheaper than the actual cameras like we, that I added at the roundabout to actually capture video. Those are more expensive. So, we want more cameras, pay more.
How much would one, say, how much would another one cost?
More than we can currently afford.
Oh, wow.
I don't have the numbers.
Thank you.
Okay. Radio Shack, no.
They're gone, too. Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian.
No question, it's just one comment. It sounds like not direct cost, but again, month after month, we're seeing further and further proof that the calls coming out of the the fire station are rarely called within the city limits, is what it looks like.
Sorry. I have lots of comments on that. The new rec person and our new staff, apologies, we get to meet them fairly soon in a council meeting near us?
Yes. My apologies. I had a slide with pictures and titles, so you could see their faces publicly, but we will share that with.
Thank you. Going back to our rec person, when we receive an application, is that person, will that person, can that person, as soon as an application is received, reach out to the event coordinator and say, thanks, we've received your application, we'll get back to you soon?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that tremendously. Trucks, you reached out to Taylor Farms. We've had, thanks to both you and the city manager, have had really good conversations with Taylor, Trulieve, and Coke. Is there a way that we can start reaching out to them and? Um, is there a way that we can start reaching out to them and ask them to tell all their truckers regardless of what? Uh, Google Maps or Waze or whom, whatever application they're using. Um, to stay the heck out of San Juan Bautista?
Yeah, actually myself and the code enforcement officer delivered um, notices to each company about six, seven months ago. Um, and then having this discussion just triggered my memory. I've also been in uh, contact with Steve Loop from County Roads. Um, for better signage. So I have a meeting coming up with him and our public works department to actually come up with better signage. Maybe some flashing lights at Prescott, like do not pass, do not pass go.
Yeah.
Signs, right? Um, so we're working that out.
A- a- and Monterey, um, they're, they're coming later and later and later at night. Um, through, through the city, uh, mainly from, um, I don't notice them as much coming from, although they do, coming from. From the, um, those guys into town. Um, a- and actually I've seen them come down. I don't know if they come in Monterey, see the sign there and take a right. And then come through downtown, down Third Street. Um, or if they're coming off of one fifty-six through the Alameda, um, down Third Street. But we are getting um, traffic in town as well. Um, just not sure where the origin is. Um, but thank you. I appreciate all of this and all that you're doing. Um, questions, comments, concerns from um, public? Yeah, I'm, I apologize, sorry. City manager, my bad, my bad.
My apologies. I just wanted to sneak in a couple of additional comments. Um. Staff is looking into uh, potential fines for large trucks that come in that are, shouldn't be there.
I, I let them know that it's three thousand dollars. So if you wanna start there and move up, I'm fine with that.
So we, we are looking into that. I just wanted to put that out there. That is under research and we're gonna be reaching out to the city attorney for, for support on that. Second thing, uh, Mr. Quaid had a question about the mural. Um, the San Benito Arts, um, they take care of the graffiti for us. They have been notified. They're notified, we, we, we're, we're, we're very mindful of the mural and. E- every time it's been tagged, it's an issue, it's an ongoing thing, we know, and we've been in constant communication with them about fixing it and. They're, they're on it. They're gonna get somebody out there to, to take care of it. We've talked about additional cameras, Roy's already on that. He's, he's on the job on, on the additional camera front. And I think, and then in terms of slurry and roads, cause that was something that came up earlier tonight. We are gonna have a CIP presentation next month. So uh, Doug will be here, city engineer, he's gonna talk about everything on the CIP and what the status is. And uh, Public Works is also in the mix on that as well. So we'll have more on that next month.
That's a capital improvement plan for those of us who are.
Obviously done.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, and along, along the lines of the mural and the bridge, I know that the arts council has talked about. Uh, lighting and potential cameras. Um, if we can pursue that, maybe, I don't know if grants will take care of any of that. Um, apologies, back to public comment. Uh, Bob Quaid, you have three minutes. Hi Bob, welcome.
Hi.
I just had a question on your report on the crime. The sheriff's report didn't include the nine, going nine twenty-four. On nine twenty-four is that's when the um, three Miata tops got stolen. And so I'm wondering, we have these cameras and I'm not sure where they're at. I guess it was still in. So to steal three Miata hardtops, you, you don't have a small cars going in and out. You probably have a pickup truck. Or a box trucks. Do you know if the sheriff's department reviewed their, the tapes after that event to see if. They could have saw a vehicle go out of town? Is that something we could check on?
Thank you. Zoom?
Uh, no hands raised on Zoom, Meta Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, reports from city council representatives to regional organizations and committees. Um, and then from there we'll go into city announcements. So this is. Uh, representation at regional organizations. Council member Aronda?
Um, I have nothing to report other than, well, Cal Cities.
The what?
Cal Cities.
Well, Cal Cities. Yeah, go ahead, absolutely.
Um, other than I attended the um, California League of, of Cities Conference Expo Conference, I forget what it's called. Um, down in Long Beach, it went really well, um, learned a lot, represented San Juan, um, Bautista. Um, learned quite a few things. Actually, I, I still owe our city manager and, and clerk some business cards for certain. Um, items, um, one of the things that I, I got to talk to some vendor was, uh. You know, like, kind of like a docu, docu-sign situation where it's cheaper than, than that, but um. And also allows us to uh, digitize all our, our files and whatnot and, and store it. And so um, I thought that was really neat and I thought it would be really important just because um, I know a lot of us come in typically to sign things. So it'd be nice to get rid of that. Um, another really cool thing that I got to talk to, I forget the name of the vendor, but. Talking about holidays of lights parade, um, when we were putting that on, um, and also talking about the other. Those, there is a company that actually does, um, Dia de los Muertos. They'll decorate your city for you. They'll put the stuff on the lights, they'll string the, um, I forget what it's called. I always call it Pico de Gallo, but papel. Pico, picado. Um, they'll string the lighting across, they'll do the wreaths and all that. And then when the time comes, they leave and, and whatnot. So I asked them if they had an office up here north. They said they did. Um, it's a two-week turnaround time, so I thought that was really cool. And maybe we can work with some of the uh, local nonprofits like the Rotary, Spirit of San Juan, to see if we can put some money together to, with the city. Um, put something together to decorate our town for the holidays. Um, other cool things I attended, some great sessions was, um, for me, I, you know, I'm new, new council member here, but. Um, I wanted to know what, how do we prepare for natural disasters? Um, so I went to a session on how to prepare for and what to do when there, there's a fire coming down or flooding. Um, that was a really great session. Um, I also got to talk to vendors about what we, you can do. I know we had that great flood over on the one fifty-six and Mission RV Park where. There's a company that can, if you anticipate a, a big storm, they can inflate these huge inflatable. Things to deter water and, and make water flow a different route or. And also, you know, how to evacuate town, um, you know, whether you're providing generators to cellular towers, pump stations. Each council member reports here to city hall and there's a command center and. You're responsible for a certain section of the town and how to get people out, um, and what to do in events and how to keep communications going and how to. Talk on radios and whatnot. So I just thought that was really great. Um, a lot of, a lot of the focus this year was on AI and what cities are doing with um, artificial intelligence, which I thought was great. Coming from a technology background. Um, but one of the biggest things we've learned about AI is that it still requires. Intervention from someone. You can't just tell something to do it. Um, so uh, there's a lot of that going on. Um, and then of course, attending a lot of the caucuses like the Latino caucus, the LGBT caucus. Um, you know, I tried to tend as many as I, I could just to kind of get a feel um, for it and, and how we can support and whatnot. So. Um, that, that was pretty much uh, a majority of it, but I, I really did enjoy it, did a lot of networking. Um, so I'm really happy to um, be able to call some other council members from down south and north and. Um, it's just, it was a really good time. So other than that, um, that's all I have back uh, to report.
Good on you for attending.
No, thanks.
And reporting out on it. And council member Freels.
Okay, all I had was the um, area on aging. Um, I missed, let's see, I missed August, cause I was on vacation. September, unfortunately I had to help my mom with some medical issues. Um, so I walked into almost a whole room of new faces, cause I think they, I think they rotate on the fiscal year. So I was like, oh, wow, I don't recognize anybody. I wasn't sure if I was there, but um, um, some positive stuff. Out of San Benito County, um, Martha's Kitchen is doing really well. Their, their, um, their fault, their, their. Keeping up to expectations, um. Their, their budget uh, management, their record keeping is pretty, pretty spot on. So everybody's really happy about that. And um, on the transportation notes, um, because a lot of us, our seniors need to use our transportation. The company that we um, hired last year, uh, last year's cog, that um, brought in the new company. Um, there has not been a whole lot of issues and one of the biggest complaints that. People had to us at cog last year and the last three years is things like dial ride, um, never showed up. So people were waiting for a dial ride, they couldn't get, um, you know, they couldn't get a, two doctor's appointment. But it sounds like the new company's doing a really good job from what the folks on area of an aging are, are hearing. So. Um, our seniors aren't standing out in the rain. Um, um, and then um, there's. A lot of Santa Cruz County struggling with a lot of stuff right now. Um, they've had some closures or some budget cuts. Um, so uh, it's gonna be interesting to see what those folks go to. And then there's sent, there's another thing, it's kind of a concern. Um, something new come out of Sacramento that's going to allow counties to take over these agencies. Um, and from the general consensus of this advisory committee, that's, that's a really bad idea. Because it would basically destroy our senior program here, any type of county-wide senior program. Um, and it would probably destroy Santa Cruz counties also because it sounds to me like Santa Cruz county's struggling also with their books. Um, so um, fingers crossed that isn't pushed too much. They think some of the larger counties um, may try to pull it off. But you know, there's counties way up north like Humboldt, Del Norte and um, Humboldt, Del Norte, um, all those little counties. And they have to, without the region, they, they wouldn't exist, especially with their, um. Just the transportation, because it's so rural. You know, you can't get from point A from point B, like going down one fifty-six, you have to travel. You know, thirty miles all the way to get around Mount Shasta to come back around to pick somebody up at Whiskey Town or, you know, whatnot. So. Um, they're really worried about some of this stuff that's going on statewide as far as. You know, counties, they don't think they're gonna, you know, go under, but um, but all in all, things are sounding pretty positive and well, and, and once again. Um, Clay is the, the guy's, uh. Man, man, I don't know where he, the, the guy has so much knowledge in his head. I just know how, it's not spilling out. It's just, he's an incredible person. So. Um, missed this meeting, um, but I'll be back on next month. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, Clay is an amazing, amazing guy, um, and helped a lot with the, um, our senior center here. Martha's Kitchen is here on Mondays for lunch?
Yes, community center.
Mondays, community center, eleven to one, I think they are.
I talked to um, Augie from the VFW, the VFW commander, he helps out with it and he's really happy.
He does, yeah, he does.
He's really happy with the transition and how much better it's run and.
Super cool.
And the quality, too.
Yeah, I've attended a couple and, and um, the folks there seem to be really happy with it. Yeah, very nice to hear. Um, and with um, Jose's comments on. Emergencies, um, can we maybe get OES in here someday? For a presentation on, on what we do in command centers and things like that. Thank you. Council member Morris Lopez?
Mine's gonna be. Not attend cog last month. I got stuck at the clinic, so I quickly notified. Benue, Abrams and also the chair, um, Velazquez. Um, our cog meeting is supposed to be in two days, but it's canceled this month and um, we'll reschedule for November. And then I have not attended an intergovernmental because they have not been taking place. And those are the only two committees that I'm involved with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Also short, uh, the one time I was called to be an alternate, I was stuck at work in Santa Cruz and couldn't make it over, unfortunately.
Thank you. If um, if the primary person can't attend one of their committee meetings, can you call the. Secondary and if the secondary cannot call me, um, so we make sure that we have coverage or representation anyway. Um. No LAFCO, no tourism, no intergovernmental. Um, pattern. Uh, we did have the fire protection meeting. And we talked about the feasibility study and fire cost recovery. Um, as our city manager stated, um, the city of San Juan Bautista handles the contract. For the feasibility study, we are going forward with it and um, we'll have another meeting. Um, fire cost recovery, that was voted down or postponed to the next meeting? Was postponed to the next meeting. Um. Uh, that's it, that's all there was. Um. City council announcements.
Uh, just a reminder for everyone uh, out there to attend the Dia de los Muertos event that's coming up. Um, and second, I just wanted to make an announcement out there that on November first, I think. Which is also Dia de los Muertos, um, the Theatro turns sixty. Um, so if you're out there, can drop by, say hello, um, and uh, congratulate those guys. I know they're, um. They were a huge part um, of this community. So congratulations on the Theatro for their sixtieth. Um, and that's all I got.
Thank you, council member Freels.
I've got a couple of things. Um, I wanna personally thank the, the Native Daughters Parlor in San Juan. Um, they are taking over the downtown barrel, um, the, the succulents and, um. My wife, Diana Carr and um, my wife's mother, Anne Fritsch, they planted a whole bunch of new stuff in the barrels. Um, Lowe's donated, I wanna say close to forty plants.
Wow.
So um, which was really nice. Sylvia, who we all see at the VFW all the time, she's running it there and she, she, she was instrumental in getting those. Um, so the, the barrels are going to have some TLC, which is really nice to see. Um, myself and um, Sean Fitzharris and John Hopper have been working on. Something to do with um, emergency preparedness. We're working on a project right now, um. In the last couple of years, we've had some strange outages, outages where um, internet was down, um. Internet was down, the radio stations were down, phone services were down. Um, and it concerns all of us and we all have, um, the three of us all have some type of um, emergency services background. Um, Sean is a, um, he's a ham radio savant. And, and he's, um, and he's, you know, incredibly intelligent person. So we're working on, uh, on a system, uh, that's not new, but it's relatively new. It's um, it's called the GMRS radio system. Um, it's not an extensive permit process like getting a ham um, license. I mean, just. I got my ham license and it was almost seven hours worth of cramming just to take the test. Um, I thought it was gonna, my head was gonna pop. Um, and I passed. Um, GMRS is real simple. It's just a, a ten dollar application and it's good for your entire family. Um, and just for those going, what's the GMRS radio? It's a, it's almost like those little family radios, but they have repeater capabilities. So we are researching repeater sites around the area. Um, sounds like we may get one in the canyon. Um, Adam Jones is helping us with that. Uh, Cara Denny's helping us one uh, up, up by the cross. Um, and we're looking into something in the Romus area. Um, we'll have a good coverage. For everybody, just in case we do have another one of those. Mostly, and not, just to, we're asking everybody. Not to use it as just some gossip thing, you know, uh, day to day, sure, use it however you want, but if we do have an emergency, let's make sure it's, you know. If your neighbor, neighbor needs help and they can contact one of us close to the station or something like the ambulance quarters, we can, you know, we can do it. And so it's, it should work out to be a pretty good deal. We tried just the family radios, but um, because we have so many trees and obstructions, it doesn't reach very far. So um, just something in the, in, in the mix, now that I put some pressure on Sean over, for a meeting. Um, but we are working on it and it's not a very expensive system. Um. And Sean thinks he can build it all himself, which is. and Sean thinks he can build it all himself with just stuff he has laying around his shop. I mean, the guy's amazing. Um, and then just one more, I always try to shout out to the VFW. Um, it's football season. There's Sunday, they have Sunday football, they have Monday night football. Sundays are great. They're like a huge potluck. Everybody brings some food. Um, the vets love it when, you know, folks from town pop in and, and, and just share their lives with them. They're, the guys are trying to pave the parking lot, which is desperately needed. And if they can do that, then they're going to be able to hold a lot more events, like car shows and then the, you know, the flea market type things. They're going to work on, they're talking about doing a Sunday, like every Sunday type swap meet little thing. So, so that should, should be pretty cool. Um, and, and it's, it's a fun time, you know, and, um, the, the halls coming along. Um, they, they were able to pay for their, their new plumbing project and they're getting a facelift and they had some volunteers from, um, what's the plant here on, um, Union Road by San Juan Oaks, um, east, yeah, Pacific Scientific. They, they volunteer once a year in the community to help clean up places and stuff. So they volunteer with the VFW, they helped clean up, they did a bunch of painting, they did some repairs. So it was really nice. Um, just wanted to make sure that those, those folks got some credit for coming out and doing that. So, yeah, Sunday, if the sign's out, you know, come on in. Cheap, cheapest drinks in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
I follow that up, except that they have heavy pours. I had a cocktail once there and I had to get like a soda to water it down. But anyway, I just want to, um, go ahead and just repeat like, um, Jose did to all of us go out there and support Dia de los Muertos. Um, the other thing, um, to announce is, um, Golden Well Antiques, they have been around forever and they just, I wish that the city, we could do something for them. And I'm just going to do a shout out today. Um, Anthony Canojo has been in business for 63 years and I, and I really hope that we could maybe think about doing some recognition for him. If you know Anthony, you know, right? But he's, he's been there at that end of the block for 63 years and he's still there. And in a time when people don't appreciate i- antiques, you know, people are more familiar with Ikea and Target, um, furniture, hate to say, but he's got some beautiful pieces in there. Also jewelry, I've had, been gifted jewelry, rings by my husband, special occasion. Um, you can only ask, you have to have an appointment. He doesn't just bring out all the gold. Um, he's got very beautiful furniture, antiques, jewelry, snuff bottles, you name it. So a shout out to his, um, business and maybe we can think about doing something special. Um, they had a, we had a wonderful event at their bocce ball court. It was gorgeous. It's a little hidden secret behind that wooden fence on the end of, um, Third Street by the little white church. And, um, yeah, so I, I feel like with the holidays coming and everybody working together, it's really great that Roy and Dan, uh, you know, pulled together the mission, the state park, the city, you know, that's like the old days. Um, so I'm really happy to see that and feel that community spirit just reigniting. So thank you, everybody that's behind all of this.
And the water project. Thank you, Mayor Protem Sebastian.
Thank you. I don't have any announcements.
Thank you. Uh, yay, thanks to the Native Daughters. Uh, happy 60th to, uh, the Teatro. Um, yeah, I don't think I have any other announcements. Oh, big shout out to, uh, the fire department who celebrated their 150. Um, uh, Roy and myself were there from San Juan Bautista. And yeah, Roy and myself were there. Uh, congratulations, guys. Thank you very much. We appreciate all you do. Um, looking forward to celebrating all of, how many captains are they choosing? Two. Um, and Josh, Josh Bizetta, um, just became a captain, battalion chief. Sorry, Josh. Um, yeah, thanks for all that you guys do. Um, I think that's it. I think, I think we can call it a day. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Sebastian, seconded by, or Mayor Protem Sebastian, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Friel?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.